And good morning and welcome to the Board of County Commissioners' regular public meeting for Tuesday, September 10th. I'd like to thank everyone for being here this morning. It's another great day here in Manatee County. Now, as we always do at all of our meetings, we always recognize our God and pledge to our great nation. And this morning, we have Pastor Mark Gibbons of Mill Creek Baptist that'll be coming forward and giving our invocation. And this morning, we also have, for our pledge, our very own Major Charles Cook, who is with the Army Reserve Medical Corps. And just a little bit of background on Major Cook, he went to the Service Academy, West Point. Sir, thank you. He has received the Merit of Legion, Meritorial Service Medals, three times, Army Commendation Medal, two awards, and various other awards and ribbons and medals that have been given to him. So, sir, thank you for your service and thank you for being one of our very own here at Manatee County. If anyone would rise as the pastor gives the invocation, and please standing for the pledge.
Let's pray. Dear Father, we thank you for the many blessings that you give to us. Thank you for life itself. Thank you for the ability to serve and to make a difference. God, we thank you for loving us even when we don't deserve it. And Father, this morning, I just want to pray for these leaders today, that you would grant them wisdom with all the conflicting interests and issues of our time, that you would give them a sense of the welfare for the true needs of the people, that you would give them a thirst for justice and rightness. God, give them confidence in what is right. Give them the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement. Give them personal peace in their lives and joy in their task. And Father, I pray for the agenda today, that the goals that they've set. And Father, please give an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in and around the city of Bradenton. Father, I pray all this in the name of Jesus. For it's in whose name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Pastor. Thank you, Major. And we appreciate your all's service to Manatee County and to our great nation. County Administrator, is there any changes to the agenda?
No, sir. All the updates have been added to the electronic.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, is there any item that anyone would like pulled from consent, from the consent agenda? Seeing none, thank you very much. All right, we're going to move into the next section of this morning's meeting, which is awards, presentations, and proclamations. This is some of the fun stuff we get to do. We get to recognize our employees, get to hear some great presentations, and get to do proclamations for what goes on here in Manatee County. So, up first, the award for September Employee of the Month is to Ian McNair, and who's coming forward?
Good morning, Commissioners, County Administrator, County Attorney, Drew Richardson, Director of Information Technology Services. It's my honor and privilege to be able to recognize one of our bright and rising shining stars, Mr. Ian McNair. Came to the county initially, actually under property management, back when County Administrator Bishop was the lead there as an intern so many years ago. He had a stint in property management as well as development services, which has given him a very broad background on the departments. And then he's been with IT for a while now as well. He also was a part of our hurricane response in the EOC recently. He's achieved multiple certifications, awards, in the last year and a half or so, and he has completed the county leadership program. Mr. Ian McNair, his manager, direct manager, is Mark Murphy, and Mark would like to say a few words as well.
Thanks, Drew. Yeah, I'm very pleased today that Ian is being recognized with this award. I knew Ian when he first came to the county as an intern with property management, but it wasn't until Ian was a GIS analyst with the Development Services Department that I had an opportunity to work up close with him. I found Ian was always prepared for meetings, took great notes, asked insightful questions, and Ian was a key ingredient to making that project a success. Year 2000 had a chance to, or we had an opening in IT GIS, Ian applied, and I had a chance to add him to our team, and I couldn't have been more pleased. Ian has been a great asset for us and continues to do great work every day. He's grown his skill set and is also an excellent communicator, so he's a tremendous asset to us, and I really appreciate all his dedication and effort.
Thanks, Ian.
Do I press something? Oh, okay. Yeah, I just wanted to, you know, acknowledge my appreciation for the recognition, but more so my appreciation for the folks on my team and everybody else who works at the county. I've learned and continue to learn so much from everybody, and I'm very grateful for that. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Ian. We appreciate all the hard work you do, plus in the IT department, which I have no idea what you guys do. You're kind of like a CIA black site down there. But thank you for all you guys do in keeping the county up and operational through everything we go through, just the past storm we went through, getting all the information out that we all needed to keep everybody moving forward and safe. So, but thank you very much for your service in Manatee County and the job that you do. Thank you. We appreciate you. Thank you. Drew, you gonna give him this award? There you go. There you go. Well, thank you, guys, very much. And congratulations again on being Employee of the Month. I still have no idea what those IT guys do. Next up is Presentations, which will be Storm Recovery Resources and Public Safety Director Fisk. Is she going to present?
Clear out.
Oh, you're gonna let them clear out? Okay. Oh, there she is in the back. Director Fisk. Good morning.
Good morning. So, I'm going to actually introduce Chief Matt Myers, Jody Fisk, Public Safety Director, to start off the presentation on the ongoing recovery efforts in Manatee County following Hurricane Debbie. Do you want to make sure that we clarify when we talk about the recovery that's going on? That is the continued recovery for our residents, for our businesses, for county infrastructure. I think that there's a little bit of confusion out there with recovery meaning like response operations with points of distribution that you would normally see in the immediate days following a hurricane. This is that longer-term recovery that we are still in for the county. So with that, I will turn it over to Chief Myers.
Morning, Chief.
Morning. Just to give you some updates, start, here we go. So, we have some damage assessment numbers. Let me flip my page, sorry. Residential and business damage assessment, major, minor, and affected. So, really quick, major is more than 50% of the property or the, sorry, the building itself had some sort of damage. We had 164 of those. Minor is less than 50% in 94 of those. And then affected, some sort of minimal damage to the structure itself, 54. Estimated loss is about $56 million. Public assistance, we are now federally declared for CATS A through G, and that includes roads and bridges, buildings and equipment, utilities, parks, rec, and other facilities. And you can see those numbers there. That is damage numbers, and it's an estimate. So, as we continue to go through the process of recovery, we could see those numbers fluctuate. We do have a little kind of chart to show you the debris numbers and a heat map of where the affected areas were. You can see, obviously, the darker reds would be more affected. So, this is the debris that has been picked up currently, 98, sorry, 9,820 cubic yards and 210 loads. They are continuing with that process and continue to go through, they started with the major affected areas, and then they're going to continue going through the neighborhoods to find any other debris. Individual assistance, so far, we've had, these numbers are going to be a little bit updated probably today, 2,863 registrants, individuals, homes, and housing program referred was 1,600, eligible 788, and dollars approved so far is just a little over $3 million. Housing assistance dollars is just 1.2 million, and then other needs assistance dollars at 1.8 million. This is just current as FEMA goes through and continues to look through those applications, and they can get an update on that. Disaster Recovery Center is open Monday through Saturday, 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. The DRC is for in-person individuals for registration, updating their needs. Maybe they, in the process, have lost a job or gotten hired somewhere, so they can go back in in-person, talk to someone from FEMA. Additionally, there is more ways to get FEMA assistance. You can go to disasterassistance.gov. You can download the FEMA app or call the toll-free number, 800-621-FEMA. You do not need to have the required insurance, flood insurance, or anything to get that FEMA assistance. So, we do want people to make sure that they continue to register if they have not. Additionally, at our sites, we do have SBA, which is Small Business Association. Their resources for business recovery is open at Rocky Bluff, Monday through Thursday, 9:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. And then Friday and Saturday, they're there from 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. They are closed on Sunday, but the SBA is also at the DRC. That's when they can give low-interest-rate loans to individuals. And then going to bring up Director Fisk to talk about, let me hit it, sorry, Activate Hope and what that information is.
So, Activate Hope is the state's version of individual assistance for FEMA. It's a way to connect residents with additional resources within the community for any unmet needs. Kind of came about because I think a lot of folks have seen after a disaster, random GoFundMe accounts would be popping up and people saying, oh, we're collecting money or we're collecting goods to go to those affected, but there was no way to track it. There was no way to guarantee that funds that were donated were going to the correct people. So, this was Florida Division of Emergency Management. It's an unmet needs portal. So, you can go to the website, hopeflorida.com/get-help/hurricanedebbie, and you can, the resident can fill out what their needs are, what their impacts were, and it connects you to a variety of resources that are within the county that can assist with needs in the immediate aftermath. You can also call 850-300-HOPE or 4673. Out in the lobby, we do have this slide with the QR code that you can also scan that will take you directly to the website. This next QR code is also out in the lobby next to the copies of the agenda. This is our severe weather information. If you scan the QR code, it will take you to our GIS dashboard with all pertinent current up-to-date information for Hurricane Debbie and then any additional storms that we may hopefully not encounter for the rest of this season. So, with that, I'm actually going to bring up Casey Zempel and have him discuss some of the other features that are on the website.
Thank you, Jody. Casey Zempel, Communications Division Manager, hello. Thanks for letting us come here and give you an update. The mymanatee.org/storm website continues to be operational, not only as we continue to serve those impacted by Debbie, but also as we navigate our way through the height of hurricane season. Now, since the start of Debbie, this page has had close to 130,000 views with a relatively short session time, implying that people are finding what they need quickly. Our Public Safety Communications Coordinator, James Nicholson, is still updating the recovery tab with the latest information on online resources, as well as our FEMA Disaster Recovery Center at Lakewood Ranch Library. That just got new hours updated yesterday. Hope Florida Flood Plane Post Storm Guidance and fees, information on fees being waived for certain types of building permits. Since the ground is still highly saturated after the wettest spring on record, our Sandbag tab is operational and providing guidance on locations where citizens can prepare their homes. In addition, our Road Closure tab is being updated with coordination between 311 and their recently updated hours and expanded hours. All that coordination is happening with Communications Coordinator Ogden Clark in Public Works, so that information continues to get updated daily. And the site still proves to be a valuable resource for those seeking information about their respective evacuation levels, emergency planning, and further recovery needs, and will remain updated and operational for the duration of hurricane season. So, it's just one of those continuing things that, you know, we started with Debbie and we haven't really slowed down at all as far as the information getting put on that website. So, again, mymanatee.org/storm, everything that a citizen could want can be found there. Thank you.
That concludes our presentation, so we will.
I think we have a few questions. Commissioner Ballard.
Yeah, just one quick question. So, I know that if people would like to apply for individual assistance through FEMA, they don't have to have flood insurance.
Correct.
What is the timeline where they have to get those applications in to make sure that they could actually receive that assistance if they're deemed eligible?
So, the deadline for that is actually five weeks.
Okay.
We will confirm that with FEMA. That's the FEMA disaster period.
Okay.
So, the application period right now is five weeks, but depending on also what's happening in our neighboring counties, that deadline could change.
Okay. So, but the long and short is if people have been affected and they want to get assistance from FEMA, they should get in there and apply pretty quickly if they're able.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, it's not just flood insurance, like even if you didn't have homeowner's insurance, like that's the reason for those programs is to assist people that need that assistance in the immediate aftermath of the storm. So, definitely go apply if anybody is reaching out and seeing that they need additional assistance. And I would highly encourage everyone to also go to the Activate Hope, or Hope Florida, rather. That is another very, very good resource that has been very successful in the state.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other questions? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
We appreciate you being here this morning. Thank you for the continued updates. All right, up next, we're going to have Caitlin Bryant's coming forward on the intern, on the intern program, the summer internship program.
Good morning, County Attorney, County Administrator, Commissioners Chair. I have Kate Barnett, Human Resources Director. I have the pleasure this morning of highlighting our summer internship program for 2024. Kind of put these out of order, apologize. Our 2024 internship program comprised of six departments and their mentors hosting 10 interns. And it is a very robust program, and I'd like to thank Jessica Alonso, Michaela Lindencamp, and Laura Ruiz, who are the internship committee for organizing our internship agenda, which includes orientation, professional development skills, and also some fun with kayaking and Bradenton Marauders game. And really, the highlight of this is the presentation to our county administration and our directors. It is a project-based internship program. And here are our 2024 interns, represented by Community and Veteran Services. Some of the projects include Veterans Connections, Website Improvements, Grant Management Software Solutions, and Grant Opportunities for our children's programming, as also outreach for community HOAs. Property Management captured and updated floor plans for our Manatee County buildings and locations. Blake with Sports and Leisure expanded pickleball programming. And our Human Resources intern highlighted some high school recruitment initiatives. And Natural Resources had a very interesting and educational presentation of correcting the accuracy of water quality in our, for our Manatee River. So, Public Works, we're going to highlight one of the interns this summer, Caitlin Bryant, and she will tell you all about her project and some also exciting news that happened to her at the end of her time here with Manatee County.
Good morning. So, my name is Caitlin. There is another intern, Joshua Holler, but sadly, he is back at college, so he's not able to do the presentation with me today. But our summer project was doing the sidewalk inventory project for the Traffic Engineering Division at Public Works. So, our project was focusing on establishing and verifying a sidewalk inventory along county-maintained thoroughfares. And just a little background, asked why there is two of us. So typically, the county only has one intern assigned to each project, but our project, we had over 320 miles that needed to be driven for the county, and for safety reasons, there needed to be two of us going at a time. So, it would have been really hard to achieve within the scope of the internship, so that is why there's two of us. But throughout the project, we did have our tasks equally distributed, and we also gained unique experience in our own interest areas. And then just to outline the project process, so we received our project assignment, then we started doing desktop analysis, and we would notate where there were sidewalk and sidewalk gaps on a GIS web app. And then we did field verification to verify what we put was right, and then we did our presentation. So, just to reiterate the project goal, we were collecting and verifying sidewalk data along county-maintained thoroughfares to identify existing sidewalk and sidewalk gaps within the future development area. And just to clarify, it is being done on both sides of the road, as you can see in the map. So, why is having a sidewalk inventory important? So, the county is striving to achieve a multimodal transportation system, so not just focusing on roadways, but sidewalks and buses and et cetera. So, overall, increasing the mobility for our citizens, but also ensuring that it is safe, convenient, efficient, and we're also accommodating citizens with disabilities. And then in addition, the data set that we have created can assist the county pertaining to any citizen request, doing any maintenance that might be needed along these sidewalks, and managing budget, can help with systematic growth, and can also help develop a prioritization for filling in gaps in the future. So, starting the project, this is what our web app looked like before really did any field verification. It consisted of thoroughfares, sidewalks, sidewalk gaps, and measuring spots where we stopped to measure. And then just to break down the layers so it's easier to understand the maps going forward, so in yellow is our thoroughfares. Thoroughfares are just main roadways designated to connect to other roadways, and there are three road classification types. There's county-maintained, local roads such as neighborhoods, and federal and state roads, and we were just focusing on county-maintained. And then as for sidewalks, our map aerials are based on the most current, so they're taken towards the beginning of the year. So, it's kind of just a snapshot in time, what our data is being based off of, which I will touch on in a little bit. But in red represents where we notated sidewalks on the desktop, and then green represents where we have gone out and confirmed that there is a sidewalk there, and then in blue represents where we have stopped to confirm. And then as for sidewalk, there, in purple is where we have notated a sidewalk gap on the desktop, and then in pink represents where we have confirmed with field verification. So, setting some parameters before we did any field collection, we wanted to make sure we were just having a more easy amount to start with. So, we were just focusing on the county-maintained thoroughfares, and then we are only focusing on the thoroughfares within the future area development boundary as seen on the map in the pink line. So, anything east of that boundary, we did not do for this exercise. And then any data pertaining to the presence of ramps at intersections was not collected. And as I mentioned, field verification was done in spot checks with, and we were just measuring where the width change was. So, as for the data analysis portion of this, on our GIS mobile web map that we had created, where we saw a sidewalk, we would draw a line, or vice versa with a sidewalk gap, and there was the following attributes given to it, just the street name, the sidewalk width, if the curb and gutter was present, as seen on the picture in the right, if utility strip was present, as seen on the picture in the left, and a utility strip is just a grassy area that separates the sidewalk from the road. And then who inspected it, when it was inspected, and if it was inspected, and curb and gutter and utility strip were not collected attributes for the sidewalk gaps. So, as I mentioned, our map aerials are a snapshot in time, so when we're going in to do the desktop analysis, our sidewalks are being based off of that point in time. So, there are instances when construction was occurring on the aerial, and when we go out to do field verification, construction has since been complete, so we need to change a sidewalk gap to a sidewalk and vice versa for, there were instances where there is no construction occurring, and when we go out, all the sidewalk is ripped up, so we need to change that. And then there are also instances of tree canopy covering sidewalks, so it can be hard to measure the width of the sidewalk as well as where the sidewalk starts and stops. So, technology is pretty accurate, but it does have its limitations, which is why it is important that we are going out to do the field verifying. And then as for measuring, we just use a measuring wheel to measure the width of the sidewalk, and there is a limitation as shrubs can be on the edge, making it hard to get its true width, but it's accurate enough for what we're doing. And then as for just limitations with fieldifying in general, so it's not always safe for us to stop where we want to stop to measure a sidewalk just due to oncoming traffic, so there may have been instances where we missed a width change and it was not able to be notated. And then also just stopping at every sidewalk in the county would be very time-consuming. So, we just stopped where we notated width change on the desktop or where we saw a visual change driving. And so, this is a look at the web map currently with all the sidewalk and sidewalk gap being confirmed within that future area development. And so, the north section of the county in the Palmetto Parish area, as you can see, in pink, which is the sidewalk gap, and in green, which is the sidewalk, there is a fair amount of sidewalk gap, and what sidewalk is there is pretty disconnected. But then when you move to the southeast part of the county in the Lakewood Ranch area, because it is newly developed, the sidewalk is fairly consistent with little to note gap. And then when you move to the southwest part of the county in the Bradenton area, there is a decent amount of sidewalk, but there is still some gap. So, the next steps with pertaining to this data collection is that the data needs to be continued to be collected and verified for other county-maintained roadways, but not just that, it also needs to be continued to be updated because, as I said, construction is always occurring, so there's going to be instances where what is there will become out of date in the future. And then also, this data can be used to help create a prioritization list to determine where to start for filling in sidewalk gaps, and it can be used to help with cost estimation and things such. So, as I said, Josh is not here to talk about his additional experience today, but he focused a lot just on AutoCAD because he is interested in engineering, so he would be able to better talk about his slide, but yeah, that's his. And then as for my additional experience, I got to help edit the map layers for the web app that you saw, and then I also got to attend a ESRI conference plenary session. I got to help update the Traffic Engineering Department's crash data, and I also got to work with our system administrator on various other GS projects. And back in June, I believe, I interviewed for a position with the county, and so for the past month and a half or so, I've been working as a GS analyst in the Public Works Department of Traffic Operations. But that is all. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to present.
Well, congratulations. Great job.
Thank you.
And congratulations on your new career.
And congratulations on your new career. This is what the whole program's about. I have a couple of questions, just on your program that you ran. Did you guys do any grading of sidewalks? Like, we grade roads from A being the best and F being the worst. Did you guys do any kind of grading on sidewalks?
We did not. It was a potential attribute to do, but just like, for the timeframe we had, it was not part of the collection, but it can be going forward.
Would you recommend that they make part of the data collection? Some type of grading system for sidewalks?
I think it's definitely important going forward, if they're wanting to do prioritization, but it's also out of the scope, so I don't have a place to say that.[640.32][640.32][laughing]
All right. Any other questions for Caitlin?
I don't, I have a question for Kate Barnett, actually. Or maybe for Jessica. I'm not, I'm not sure. Thank you so much. This was, this was really, really great, and it, but my question is, when, you know, I saw the intern program, and I saw that you're pulling people from everywhere, how are we, how are we getting our interns, and how are we attracting interns from, from all over the place?
Sure. So, the, right now, it's on the web, it's always on our website, on our job boards, but we do have relationships with colleges, and we do have a network of our past interns that also have connections in their, with their friend groups, that also could spread the good word. But internships is something that we're very proud of. It's a growing program, year to year, getting more robust, and as you can see, we've hired, we've hired not only Caitlin, but a couple of other interns in either a full-time or an OPS, or just a temporary solution for all of these great initiatives and projects that our departments want to master.
Yeah, it's wonderful. I'm excited that we have such a great and robust intern program, and that we're, you know, attracting interns from not just our local area, but from other areas of the country as well. So, keep up the good work, and I, if anything that we can do to expand it further, I'm definitely in support of.
Thank you.
[inaudible]
That would be nice. That would be very nice.
Thank you, guys. Our internship program is so great. I mean, it's just, and it brings great talent to, to the county, like Caitlin, so it's, this is, this is awesome. Congratulations again. We're happy to have you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, ladies.[743.41][743.41][applause] All right. Up next, we're going to go into our proclamations, and our first proclamation is Attendance Awareness Month. Commissioner Bearden, I think the other one.
Motion.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Can we go ahead and get a motion to approve all the proclamations? Moved by Commissioner Ballard, seconded by Commissioner Manassasbridge. If y'all cast your votes now. I just always just assume. Have we ever not voted for a proclamation?
Yes.
We have.
[inaudible]
Wow, not since I've been around.
[inaudible]
Well, it passed, six, oh, six-zero. Commissioner Bearden.
Awesome. All right. Whereas the Sun Coast Campaign for Grade Level Reading is a four-county effort in Charlotte, DeSoto, Manatee, and Sarasota Counties, fostering wide community participation to achieve shared aspirations for the success of families and children, and whereas, the Patterson Foundation serves as a regional accelerator for the Sun Coast Campaign for Grade Level Reading efforts with county-specific work, and whereas, data reveals that chronic abatis, I can't even say that word.
Absenteeism.
I need, I need to be on this. Defined as missing 10% or more of school days due to any reason, whether excused, unexcused, or due to suspensions, significantly hinders academic achievement, and whereas, working together with local schools, families, elected leaders, and other community partners. The Sun Coast Campaign for Grade Level Reading is committed to focusing on reducing abatisism and addressing the factors that cause students to miss school, and whereas, the Sun Coast Campaign for Grade Level Reading is taking proactive steps to emphasize the importance of regular attendance during September 2024 through initiatives such as attendance awareness, poster contests, to recognize a critical role of regular school attendance. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Manatee County, Florida, that September 2024 shall be known, designated, and set aside as Attendance Awareness Month in Manatee County, Florida, adopted with a quorum present and voting this 10th day of September 2024, signed by Chairman Commissioner Michael Ron. There you go.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. On behalf of the Sun Coast Campaign for Grade Level Reading, we appreciate this proclamation. My name's Karen Wyden, I'm with the consultant with the Patterson Foundation. I know it might seem strange that an outside entity is, is coming to you for school-based attendance, but we believe so strongly that those who are in school now, Caitlin was a prime example, become our future workforce, and so, anything that we can do to support our schools and really enhance attendance is important to us. We have over 45,000 kiddos in our four-county area that are doing posters right now to really think about why attendance is important, and then, we have a Tier Two intervention that we're also doing to really focus on that chronic absenteeism, those 10% kids. So, again, thank you for your time, and we appreciate your support.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.[969.13][969.13][applause] Yeah. All right. Commissioner Cruz, you're up for Constitution Week. Do any folks here for the Constitution?
No constitutional people here?
No. All right.[980.94][980.94][laughing]
Whereas, September 17th, 2024 marks the 206th, 36th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas, it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary, and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate this occasion. And whereas, Public Law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America, designating September 17th through September 23rd as Constitution Week. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Manatee County, Florida, that September 17th through 23rd, 2024, shall be known, designated, and set aside as Constitution Week in Manatee County, Florida, and we ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties. This is adopted with a quorum present and voting this 10th day of September 2024, and signed by our Chairman, Michael Ron.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioners. Manatee Chapter DAR, the Minnesota Regents Council of DAR, and the Florida State Society of DAR, thank you for this recognition of Constitution Week. Just a quick word, anyone who's heard of the Daughters of the American Revolution knows that it's a lineage society, but many people do not know that we are in fact a service organization, and we have three areas of focus: education, historic preservation, and our veterans, our patriotism. In Manatee County, and through Manatee Chapter, we work very hard to support the veterans. We help with a food pantry and media center in an elementary school, and we tackle various historic preservation projects that are brought to our attention. So, we thank your support, thank you for your support very much. Thank you.
Commissioner Bearden?
You guys knew I was going to get up here and say something about this. You know, the Constitution is, is something that we need to truly understand, even as elected officials up here, to protect the constitutional rights of the people.
Absolutely.
That's why we say an oath when we sit up here, before we even take office. You know, a lot of people don't know this, but the primary role of an elected official is to protect the constitutional rights of the people.
Yes.
That's the primary role, and, you know, it, it's important that we continue to protect the constitutional rights, because over time, we will, you know, we've, we've lost a lot of rights, in my opinion. And so, it's so important that everybody that's up here, all elected officials, continue to protect our constitutional rights, because if we don't, we will lose our freedoms over time. And so, that's, that's my biggest fear, is that we will lose our freedoms over time because we are giving a little, and that's happening across the United States that I see. So, thank you so much for coming up here today.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.[1236.65][1236.65][applause]
I was on the board.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, that's okay. Never mind.
Commissioner Manassasbridge. Go ahead, man. Oh, okay. Okay. Just give me the, I'm on the board for this, just give me a wink. Commissioner Manassasbridge, you're up next.
All right, Commissioners, I have Deaf Awareness Month. If there's anyone who is here to accept, wants to come stand behind me. All right. Whereas Deaf Awareness Month was initiated in 1958 and has historically aimed to affirm and enhance the rights of deaf individuals, broaden the teaching of national sign languages, and improve access to education, information technologies, and services. And whereas, the deaf proclamation, excuse me, the deaf population encompasses individuals born profoundly deaf who primarily use American Sign Language, ASL, for communication, as well as those with varying degrees of hearing loss who utilize hearing aids or assistive listening devices. And whereas, statistics indicate that across all age groups, approximately 600,000 people in the United States are deaf, with over half of them aged 65 and above. And whereas, individuals who identify as deaf are part of a vibrant cultural and linguistic community, sharing language, social norms, behavioral rules, and a rich history, inspiring our unwavering commitment to support and uplift the deaf community. And whereas, it remains imperative to ensure equal access for individuals who are deaf to the numerous benefits and opportunities within our community. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Manatee County, Florida, that September 2024 should be known, designated, and set aside as National Deaf Awareness Month in Manatee County, adopted with a quorum present and voting this 10th day of September 2024, signed by our Chair, Mike Ron.
Thank you. Oh, who am I giving? I'll get you.
Carmine. Carmine.
Chairman, Commissioners, County Administrator, County Attorney, Carmine DiMillo, Deputy Director, Property Management, and also, the ADA Coordinator from Manatee County. Deaf Awareness Month is just that, it's a time dedicated to public awareness of the deaf and hard-of-hearing. It's a time to recognize and better understand their cultures and communication styles. Deaf Awareness Month is about hearing disabilities, but I like to look at it as hearing abilities, the ability to communicate, the ability to communicate effectively through closed caption, cochlear implants, video relay services, ASL, or American Sign Language, and hearing aids, just like the ones I have in my ears right now. It's about the ability to adapt and lead a productive life. Thank you for recognizing September as Deaf Awareness Month, and today, we have with us David Maruka and Sign Language Interpreter Janelle Barnes. David could say it.
Sure, thank you. I guess, I guess interpreter needs a microphone more than I do, so I'll stand over here. Okay, well, thank you, and good morning, Commissioners. Thank you, thank you for this opportunity, for recognizing our community in this month of September. I want to take a minute to thank you, in Manatee County, for providing a professional ASL interpreter this morning, that allows us, the deaf community, to be able to be involved. There's about 10% of deaf people here in Manatee County alone. So, again, my name is David Maruka, this is my surname, David, and I've had the pleasure of serving Manatee County Government, and other county governments as well, in the Tampa Bay area during times of need. Well, you might wonder how I am able to do that. I am able to provide specialties and services, linguistics, with the support of amazing professional interpreters, like the one you see here, Janelle Barnes. He really said that.[1514.01][1514.01][laughter] Yeah, he said, "I did, I did."[1518.13][1518.13][laughter] I was born and raised, I'm a native Floridian. I was born in South here, in the, near the Sun Coast area, and I graduated from University of Northern Florida, of North Florida, specialized in deaf and hard-of-hearing communications. I'm very excited, I'm a cyclist, I'm a naturalist, I'm a scuba diver, and also, I am nationally certified in a sign language interpreter as well, translator. So, by, you know, spotlighting this month as Deaf Awareness Month, it helps us better bridge our community, and helps us, you know, to experience what the best that Manatee County has to offer in life, in work, in play. So, thank you again so much for inviting me here today, thank you for recognizing the deaf community this month.[1575.53][1575.53][applause] Thank you.
Commissioner Ballard, you are up for Adult Education and Family Literacy Week.
Whereas, more than 43 million Americans can't read or write at the most basic level, while 62.7 million lack basic math skills, as well as the credentials and skills necessary to succeed in post-secondary education, and whereas, every year, 1 in 3 adults drops out of high school, and whereas, American Action Forum estimates that America is short an estimated 7.5 million private sector workers across all skill levels. Whereas, adult education programs contribute to solving these challenges by helping Americans move along the continuum in their educational journey to achieve basic skills and get prepared for career in college, and whereas, adult education programs in high schools and adult schools, community colleges, and community centers offer low-cost, high-value programs that upgrade the skill set of our citizens. Therefore, Bradenton, Florida celebrates Adult Education and Family Literacy Week. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Manatee County, Florida, that September 16th through 20th, 2024, shall be known, designated, and set aside as Adult Education and Family Literacy Week in Manatee County, Florida, adopted with a quorum present and voting this 10th day of September 2024, Board of County Commissioners of Manatee County, Florida, signed by our Chair, Michael Ron. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Well, good morning. My name is Sharon Bonney. I'm the Chief Executive Officer for the Coalition on Adult Basic Education. We have over 52,000 members across the country, they are working out of 2,300 local programs, and they serve millions of learners nationwide. So, when you think of adult learners, we're talking about people who need to learn the language, who need to be able to have workforce readiness skills, who need to get their high school diploma, so they're high school dropouts. We're talking about individuals who need to learn how to use a computer. It's really helping to bridge that divide for impoverished individuals. Typically, the individuals who come into the local programs, there is a huge gap in their earnings, they're typically on welfare, and so, we're really trying to help them get off of welfare into family-sustaining jobs. The idea about this is that when they get their high school diploma, typically, on average, they can make between $6,000 to $10,000 more per year, just by having that high school diploma, so it really makes a difference for them. Also, a number of the learners who come through our programs are individuals who do not speak the language, so about 60%. So, think about what that does for them in terms of just their learning, you know, being able to acquire a job, but then, their family literacy and their home life. So, being able to help them to receive those ESL services that they need, really helps them typically to go from jobs where they are impoverished to a family-sustaining wage as well. So, this Adult Ed and Family Literacy Week is actually a week that is passed each year through Congress, it's a resolution that they pass. Next week, I will be in Washington, DC, talking to members of Congress, along with our state advocate fellows from all over the country. We work with the National Governors Association, the US Conference of Mayors, and then, of course, with county boards like this, to really raise awareness. course, with county boards like this, to really raise awareness for the great work that's taking place across the country. I also wanted to mention that a lot of our adult learners come from very marginalized populations, so we're talking about ex-offenders, homeless, those that have aged out of foster care, of course, immigrants, we're talking about individuals who have not gotten their high school diploma, that sort of thing, juvenile delinquents. So, really trying to give them that second chance to help them to change the course of their life. So, I just want to thank you for being willing to recognize this important week, and I'd love to talk with you more about just adult ed programs all across the country and here in Manatee County as well.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you for the work that you guys do. A quick question, do you know what the percentage of adults in Manatee County that do not have a high school diploma or a GED?
1 in 3.
1 in 3, wow, okay, wow, I didn't know that.
Do you mind if I ask you a question? Sure. So, in Manatee County, how can, if there are people who want to connect with adult education programming, what's the best way for them to get involved?
So, the easiest way to do that is to go to our website, it's the Coalition on Adult Basic Education. We have a number of free resources, so we are not government-funded, we're completely nonprofit, in some ways faith-based, if you will. And so, we provide a lot of free resources to programs across the country. One of the things that we do is we have a national conference, it's the largest adult education convening in the world, we bring together thousands of adult educators that provide services in these local programs to millions of learners nationwide, a lot of wraparound services as well. So, when you're talking about the homeless population, for example, providing wraparound services there, foster care, that kind of thing. So, what I would say is if you're interested in finding out more, contact coaide.org, there's a ton of free resources there. There's a whole map of local programs that you can click on and get involved that way as well. Many of these programs provide virtual and in-person services. So, when the pandemic hit, we had to move from the brick and mortar, we had to move from the brick and mortar into the virtual setting, so many of them are doing the hybrid programming as well.
Wonderful, thank you so much.
Commissioner Bearden, Commissioner Bearden has a quick question.
Thank you very much. This is, board, this is the type of organization I want to get behind. If there's anything that we can do for you as a county, please let us know. And Charlie, if you'd reach out to them and, and, yeah, Andy, Andy, get out, yeah, reach out to you. But I appreciate what you're doing, because I think it's so important, you know, some of the statements that you said, you know, and, and it's very significant. So, I, I think that this board definitely would get behind something in regards to helping what you got going on, so I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you, that's great work, great work. Thank you for being here today. Andy will, Andy will get with you, get you some information. Chief of Staff Butterfield. All right, moving forward, we are now moving into the Citizens Comment portion of the meeting. This is for consideration for future agenda items. This is for items that are not on the agenda today, but are future agenda items. What we're going to do is each person gets 3 minutes, I'm going to ask if you could state your name, county residence, and you will get 3 minutes, and this is for a 30-minute time limit. What we'll do is, now that we allow call-ins back, we will ask the folks that are here, present, to come forward and speak, and then after that, we have a time after our regular agenda to extend another section for public comment on future agenda items. So, this morning, we're going to move right into it, this morning, we have Dean Sabo. Good morning, ma'am. And you know the rules.
Know the rules. Good morning, Dean Sabo, Manatee County resident. First off, I wanted to thank Mr. Bishop for facilitating the meeting that we had a couple of weeks ago regarding the status of the shelter build at Bishop. It was very informative, and we certainly appreciated the transparency that was offered by Mr. Parnell and Mr. Knight. Unfortunately, the timeline is not what has been put on record time and time again, we are looking at fall of 2016 to be able to move the dogs over to Bishop. So, that kind of puts us at a point where April 23rd, 2019, is when the money was set aside and you all unanimously voted to get this project going, and 5 years, 5 months later, we are looking at 2016 of the fall. So, unfortunately, that's not great news. Somewhere along the lines, I think a lot of things have fallen through the cracks, and accepting that we're moving forward, I'm here today to remind all of you and ask you what we can do now to house these animals in a more humane way. The building, we all agree, is condemned, dilapidated, and it's not good. So, to keep these dogs here in 2016, being mindful that they are shelter dogs, just because they're homeless doesn't mean that they should suffer. So, we've looked at the amount of air conditioners, the amount of dogs, talking about capacity of care. I'm here to ask you, as you're starting to get into the budget, to increase the budget for proper staffing, 7 days a week, holidays, and get those air conditioners on-site to accommodate the 30-plus dogs that at any time can be outside in this heat, when it's over 100 degrees, for 24 hours a day. Also, the air conditioners that we have, I think that they're expensive, and they're not being maintained. So, when's the last time that all of you changed the filter in your air conditioning units at home? It's not happening in the county building on a regular, routine, proper basis. So, even though we have a few ACs that are working, one's broken, they're still not being maintained properly, so that's not efficient either. So, with that, Amanda Ballard, it's in your district, come and check it out. The dogs need some people there, besides Mr. Cruz advocating for them. One of the other things is that, you know, when this was all voted on, we talked about, the same day, the pool, Lincoln Park Pool, the GT Bray Pickleball, and the Lakewood Ranch Library were all unanimously voted on on the same day that the shelter budget was approved. We did not buy Bishop, we were gifted Bishop, so I wanted to correct that from the record last week. So, please, everyone, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next up is Pat Simmons. Good morning, Pat.
Good morning, Pat Simmons, Manatee County. First of all, it's brought to my attention yesterday that the new mayor yacht in Palmetto has zero handicap parking spots available. And I went to their website, and it must be true, because there's nothing on their website that says they have handicap parking. It's also $25 a day to park there. And if you want to use valet, it's $35. There's just no free parking where you can go to have lunch or enjoy the rooftop restaurant, and there's no parking spots for people with disabilities. So, please look into that. But what I really wanted to talk to you about, I was talking with a girl from Manatee County that has multiple sclerosis, and she is confined to an electric wheelchair, that's how she gets around. And I asked her what kind of leisure activities or recreational activities she participates or would like to participate in in Manatee County, and she says there aren't any. Plain and simple, she said, "Oh, why not move, because there's no services for us in this county." So, I got to thinking, where's the disconnect? And it dawned on me, when I was talking with my friend from Fort St. Lucie, it dawned on me, we don't have a community center here. They have their community center in Midtown, there's a fence center in Fort Pierce, where the community can come together, play cards, play pool, use the gym. It gives the residents a sense of community and a place to go to meet their neighbors, and it's a safe, clean environment, so think about it.
Thank you, Pat. Next up is Joyce Jordan.
Hi, is this light on?
If you lay down, they'll bring it up, yes, ma'am. They'll bring it up for you, on the overhead.
Good morning, Joyce Jordan, Manatee County. As a former long-term volunteer over 12 years at the Manatee County Dog Shelter in Palmetto, I was dismayed to learn that the promised new shelter is still at least 2 years away, despite being told years ago that the new shelter would be expedited. There are over 100 dogs at the dilapidated Palmetto Shelter. I understand that Gary and Brian, who met with us and were very nice, did a recent walkthrough of the shelter, and they were able to see for themselves what a sad shape it is in. The building and grounds are in such poor shape that one would think it is an abandoned property, and I really thought it was condemned, and certainly not one that is owned and operated by Manatee County. There are currently as many as 15 dogs housed in outside kennels, where the internal mid-afternoon heat surpasses 100 degrees every day, and that is what this is from, the air conditioner. This is how horrible the air conditioners are. It's supposed to be at 64, and it's 104. They don't work, okay? They only have a fan to move the hot air around, and, and, as I told you before, one air conditioner has one hose that points in one direction, that's it, that's all it does. That needs to be improved. These dogs spend their long days panting in discomfort and misery. Staffing continues to be an issue, there are not enough staff or volunteers. Wages need to be raised across the board for those giving direct care to the dogs, not to the managers. Daily, the skeleton staff is expected to fully clean all the 100-plus kennels every morning, feed the dogs twice a day, get each dog out of its kennel at least twice a day for a walk, though often due to lack of staffing, dogs are frequently only given a few minutes in a yard, administer medications twice a day, care for the sick dogs in isolation kennels, run laundry, do general cleaning, guide potential adopters through all the kennel runs, and bring out appropriate dogs for them to choose from, clean the yards, et cetera. This list is so long that those who suffer the most are the dogs, because it is not possible to provide what should be a minimum standard of care, especially with only 2 employees. Please increase the wage rates for these employee dog handling positions, also known as animal care specialists, and add additional positions. How the shelter is operating now is not working. Once again, tens of dogs are not getting their first opportunity to relieve themselves until almost noon. And add additional positions. What that means for the dogs is that those who are housebroken, and amazing number of them are, are holding their elimination for 20 hours every single day. This leads to painful urinary tract infections as a result. Can you imagine what kind of suffering this so-called care imposes on the dogs?
Thank you, ma'am. Next up is Dean Matt. Good morning, sir, please state your name, county residence, and you have 3 minutes, sir.
Good morning, County Commissioners, County Administrator, and County Attorney. My name is Dean Matt, a resident of University Park in Manatee County. I represent hundreds of similarly situated residents. Background, in 2018, this Board of Commissioners approved county ordinance 18-29, creating University Park Recreation District and Independent Special District in Manatee County. In 2019, they issued $24 million of non-advisory assessment bonds to purchase the country club from its developer. 1,200 homes are currently paying these bonds off. Over 30 years, a total debt burden of $44 million. Fast forward, recently, they've attempted to issue another $21 million of bonds. While the Circuit Court validated these bonds in April, this ruling is under, is being appealed and is currently docketed in the Florida Supreme Court. Despite existing language expressly prohibiting additional bonds from being issued, they plowed ahead with a referendum in January to do so. For months, they've tried to suppress information from residents, and their stories have evolved and changed. They even concocted a bogus legal opinion letter. A newspaper reporter caught them executing an unapproved and backdated resolution supposedly as part of a cover-up. They've lied to residents in representing they are compliant with this county's ordinance 1829, which requires that they shall maintain a 5-year plan, they are not doing this. Last month, they held a public hearing to assess residents for another $5 million in bridge loans, which is not, and the public hearing was not compliant with Florida Statute 197-3162. They denied objections to be heard, among other things. We believe this assessment will ultimately be found to be invalid. We even got, had to get Ashley Moody's office involved and a public records watchdog group involved before they finally complied with a simple public records request, and ultimately exposed their embarrassing lies after 3 months of stonewalling. This board discriminates against certain groups by not allowing equal access to UPRD meeting space to meet for lawful purposes. This violates our most basic freedom of speech and assembly rights under our Constitution. As a government entity, it's not a private country club anymore, it's a government entity, this oppression of differing views, censorship, and discrimination must not be allowed by this county. The Florida Gaming Commission is even involved, they've opened up an investigation into illegal gambling activities and running illegal card room at UPRD. We've given them every opportunity to explain what we've uncovered, we are now at the stage where we have had to engage counsel and initiate legal action. We investigative reporters have just scratched the surface in uncovering and exposing some of the board's curiously, and curious and potentially nefarious and potentially fraudulent actions. Ashley Moody's office and the Office in Charge of Independent Special Districts have told me that this local county is responsible for oversight of its ordinances, including investigation and putting UPRD into receivership if necessary. We ask that this body open an investigation into University Park Recreation District. By opening an investigation, you fulfill your responsibilities to your citizens. We look forward to diving deeper into these issues at an upcoming meeting. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
How about that?
Yeah, perfect, good timing, thank you. Next up is Chris Whitaker. Morning, sir, you know the, you know the game.
Sir, I'm Chris Whitaker, lifelong resident of Manatee County. Just wanted to address some of the aftermath of Tropical Storm Debbie, Hurricane Debbie. You guys held a dam 101 meeting with media not too long ago, and once again stated the dam's functioning as it's designed, so just wanted to question that, because there's been an emergency spillway that's been built, and it's well documented why it was there, they call it a secondary spillway now, and during the storm, you guys manually released and opened these gates, which they're not designed to do. You did that to save the gate dams, or the dam gates, which I understand, but then again, why aren't the main, the manual gates, I'm sorry, the mechanical gates, why aren't they working the way they were? And why were we releasing uncontrolled water where there was nowhere for the water to go? Stormwater runoff and ditches are full of sediment from construction, sewers are backing up and clogged, there's a lady, Ms. Jane, file sticker, purchased her home in 1999, every year the ditches were cleared, and now they haven't been cleared in over a decade. You can go around the city and just look, and every ditch, the culverts are buried, the ditches are full of dirt, they're overgrown with grass, and that's a big problem when we have a lot of rain during hurricane season, and people's houses are flooding, lives are being changed and destroyed. When are the emergency gates getting repaired? Are they functional now? Are the, the earthing gates going to be filled up, or is uncontrolled water going to continue pouring out when we get rain? You know, when this water is released and it floods other homes downstream- You know, when this water is released and it floods other homes downstream, you guys are liable for that because you're not manually, or you're not keeping the maintenance up with them. Are you prioritizing the county water over homes and citizens? Our people's lives are less important. I understand we have to lower the water, not too much, to keep water for Manatee and Sarasota County, but then let's, let's fast forward and do we have an alternate water source if the dam fails? So we're able to reduce, you know, if we're not able to reduce water to safe level and then the dam fails also, we're going to be needing water source and people are still going to be affected. Why are we rezoning and approving homes in Level A flood-prone areas? Pope Ranch, Saltwater Meadows are in a floodway. And you guys are again going to be liable for putting homes in these waters. We need wetlands to soak up the water when it's released. Are you guys aware of hydraulic changes associated with urbanization? When we do this, 40% to 50% increase of runoff is added with reducing natural saturation. And then my last point, Mr. Matt Bauer is here, and I'm going to agree with him in asking you guys to revert back the 50-foot of wetlands buffer. It's very important for the future of Manatee County to provide healthy growth for all going forward. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Chris. Next up is Dalton Nelson.
Good morning, Dalton Nelson, Manatee County. Over 700 signed petitions in two days as a result of the Saturday meeting that a lot of us held, over 700. Those should be in your inboxes. I've been asked to represent those 700 that have put in petitions and others that are still filling them out, as well as myself. The fact that we as citizens have to spend our own money and time to put messaging out there for the public to know things this Board of County Commissioners should be doing right now is personally embarrassing for me as a Manatee County resident. People want to know why some of the plans you're using for land development are from the 1980s. And how can you as the Board of Manatee County truly understand the impact of sheet flow and elevation changes if you're using information that's 40 years old? On top of that, you're not maintaining our systems and keeping them clean, you're not having the departments constantly run to keep the ditches clean and water systems functioning, i.e. 675, right now. These things I have seen here in Manatee County and am currently documenting are downright a joke, and the fact that the Board has still not put it on the agenda in three meetings now, when we keep coming up here and we keep asking for you guys to take our comments, questions into consideration. Each and every person that is part of your constituents deserves to have these questions answered. The people here are starting to stand up and we are seeking, first of all, that this becomes a priority and is put on the agenda, and not for three minutes at a time. It is a very long discord process that needs to happen with this stuff. I and many other people can talk about this issue for hours on end and still not scratch the surface as to how deep this issue goes. It is a multi-front issue. It is not just one issue. On top of that, secondly, we, the community, are asking for a temporary moratorium on all new, proposed, and not started developments until we can get everything straightened out with the flooding problem and get it under control. We understand that some development will have to pass, but the systems that I have documented in these new communities is built to the lowest standards possible to cut costs on the developers, and we are paying for it. The taxpayers are paying for it because Manatee County is having to go back and clean up the problems associated with it, i.e. all the sedimentation that's running off of these new communities going into ditches. Lastly, please stop with this. Our hearts go out to you guys. I have not seen any one of you personally make a comment to us from this board. I have seen it on TV, and I have seen it in other interviews with the news. We've not heard anything from you guys specifically relating to our points. We want answers to these questions. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next up is Dan Cohen. Good morning, sir.
Dan Cohen, Manatee County.
Yes, sir. You have three minutes.
I'm the owner of Sunshine Puppies on Carthage Road, and I'm here to defend two decades worth of passion in three minutes. I'm safe to assume that none of the commissioners have had the opportunity to visit our location. I did bring some folders.
Yeah, Dan?
Oh, good, good. I did bring some small folders that will tell us a little bit about who we are. I'm here to address some of the misleading attacks that have happened in reference to our store that are done through the media, essentially. They talk about our babies not being cared for. I spend over $150,000 a year on general health with a veterinarian that we represent 100% of their veterinary practice. Our babies are their only practice. The reason I'm never available to the media, it's because they've always twisted the truth, and that's why you don't hear from me in the media. Please take note today of what I'm saying to you. It will not be reported in the media. Something else will be reported in the media. I'm sure that the commission themselves have experienced the twisting of the media on themselves. We see reports of lethargic dogs that can't get up, they're so sick. What they're showing you is a picture of one of my babies sleeping in a cage. That's all they're showing you. Dogs laying in their own feces, there's other complaints that we get all the time from animal control, and they come out and they know that it's impossible based on the cage that they're laying in their own feces or in their own urine. They're never founded these complaints. This last report on TV shows that I did not comply with Manatee's flooring regulation when in fact I actually have. It's for the smaller dogs, not the big dogs they show in the picture. The standards that we operate on under Manatee County, you've just heard from the shelters here, they're not operating even in 10% of the conditions that my babies are. You're going to hear that the USDA is overworked and understaffed, and that's actually 100% true. We go beyond that, well beyond that. Most of my babies have champions in our bloodlines. In the book, you'll see one that actually goes back to Lassie, if you guys know who Lassie is. OFA certifications from the Orthopedic Foundation for Animals, breeder profiles, these are not documents that are hidden in some folder in my shop, they're all over the walls in my shop. Canine care certifications from the University of Purdue. Why am I being attacked so much? This is the reason. I'm probably the only pet shop in the state of Florida, in the country, in history, to ever have one of the most recognized animal rights leaders in the community actually go out and visit my breeders. They visited my stores, they saw my entire operation, and then they came back and literally told that to the entire Board of Commissioners of Pinellas County, as well as the media, who then twisted it and attacked her. I'm asking you to please, he mentioned the Constitution, I don't want to hide behind the Constitution. I want to just have the right, I'm begging you guys to come take a tour without an appointment. Let me know at one hour's notice. Let me show you who I am, and I hope I have in the future more than three minutes. There's so much more I have to say, but it's done, and I thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, sir. No, you can leave with the...
I thought there was only six, so I only did six.
You can leave with the staff. Next up is Mike Meehan. I don't see Mr. Meehan here. In lieu of that, is, we have a few minutes left in public comment. Is there anyone on the phone? Oh, Matt's in, I'm sorry, man. Anyone else like to have a good public comment? Steve, please step forward and state your name, county residence, and you have three minutes.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Matt Bauer, lifelong resident. Good to see everybody. I'll try to make this as brief as I can. As you all know, recently, the people showed up in masses and told us overwhelmingly what they think. I'm proposing two things here today. One is to roll back the 50-foot wetland buffer back to where it was. It was overwhelmingly opposed, and I think that we got a couple different scenarios in between this, but while some commissioners won't be here by the new year, doing so, I think could put a nice little asterisk on your legacy of doing something that's right. And for those of you who are up for election in two years, I think it'd be a nice positive foot forward as we all look for the transformation of this board. The other part of this wetland buffer is, I'm not sure if you're well aware, but the county is seeking attorney fees against Joe McClash, who challenged your vote of the wetland buffer. I'm also not sure if you're aware, but county's trying to seek $250,000 from Joe. I think that is absolutely needless. I think it is an injustice and an absolute waste of our county resources. So my ask is to instruct your attorneys to dismiss their attorney fee claim. We've already spent, as a county, needless dollars pursuing this. I think at the end of the day, we all know at the beginning of the year at some point, we're going to be rolling back some of these things that is in the best interest of this county, just from the wetland buffer and beyond. And there's no reason to punish a citizen within this community for trying to do the right thing. And on top of which, Joe's not going to be the only one, if he's forced to pay any attorney fees, he's not going to be the only one paying that. Everybody behind us and behind him, and everybody who was part of this last election, is going to be helping him pay those fees. So if you're going to ask him to pay those fees, you're going to be asking the taxpayers to do so too, because we're not going to let him do it alone. So my ask is just reevaluate these things. On the attorney fee issue, that's more time-sensitive. There's a here, a deposition on October 1st, I think of county attorney, I forget the last name, I apologize, but there's also a hearing on October 15th. So no reason to waste any more tax dollars on attorneys to battle this. Just let it go, and let's move forward. That's my ask, and thank you for your time today.
Thank you, sir. All right. Does anyone else like to come give a public comment? We have a few minutes left. Step forward. Well, you, sir. State your name, county residence, and yeah, we're going to take a break right after this.
Keith Green, Manatee County. So I'll be pretty brief. I wanted to definitely thank the Manatee County Government and the City of Bradenton Government for definitely being partners in the recent first responders mass that took place yesterday evening. My counsel that I am also here speaking for from here in Lakewood Ranch, we, on behalf of all the members, we wanted to thank everyone that was able to attend, and thank you for the partnerships that have been forged with this. At the end of the day, we put this on to pretty much show that community can definitely work together. And with that being said, I wanted to thank, again, the Manatee County Government and the City of Bradenton Government for definitely working alongside with us, and we look forward to doing it again next year.
Thanks, sir. That was a great event last night, and thanks for putting that on and recognizing our first responders at that mass. All right. Seeing we have no other public comment coming forward, we have a few minutes left. Is there anyone on, on call, on Zoom?
We have one caller with their hand raised, Mr. Chair.
Okay. That one caller, state your name, county residence, and you have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Charlene Gow, C-H-A-R-L-E-N-E, last name spelled K-O-W, and I'm from Manatee County. I would like to see some kind of controls implemented about the agenda, last-minute items being put on and voted on, and the public having no real chance to evaluate some of these items, like for the land use meeting, the Marina Purchase. You know, there are some people that are kind of upset about it, and they felt like it came out of left field and they didn't have time to organize, and nobody even called in. You know, maybe they weren't even aware of the call-in comments, and, but even then, even if they were aware, a lot of people just didn't even realize it until like the last minute that it was there. So I'd like to see some kind of controls put in for a time limit as to how long you can introduce stuff before you vote on it, because there's no meaningful participation, especially when stuff is just stuck on the consent agenda item like that was, and there's no time for people to, especially for like a process of that magnitude, to react and respond to it. And that's my big thing for now.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. All right. With that, we go ahead and we'll end public comment.
Mr. Chair, we have one more caller with their hand raised.
I'm at 30, I'm at our 30-minute time limit. There will be an opportunity to speak after the regular agenda. We could open it up and have additional public comment at that time, but right now, we are at our 30-minute time limit. Commissioner Van Ostenbridge is on the board.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Pat has gone now, but I wanted to make her aware that the Marriott in Palmetto is inside of the city of Palmetto. It is not in unincorporated Manatee County, so we would have no idea what's really going on there, have any authority over it either. And then, in reference to comments that were made regarding the animal shelter, so right now, we have six dogs that are outside. They're rotated, and of course, as dogs are adopted, those are, that are outside are immediately brought in. Minimum staffing levels of three full-time and three temps, so six staff onsite is a minimum right now. Most days, like Monday through Friday, there's more, but on weekends or holidays, you'll end up with, with six, and so that's not two. And also, there are no dogs waiting until noon to go out to use the restroom. And lastly, it's not 100 degrees 24 hours a day at the shelter. I just wanted to make those statements. Thank you, sir.
All right, thanks, sir. Mr. Cruz.
Yeah, some of those are already on my list, so I don't have to repeat them. But yeah, there's some things we can control, some things we can't. City of Palmetto, we can't. Pat's not here, but what people charge for parking is not something we can control. Independent districts that are set up by the state of Florida, not the Manatee County Government, are not things we can control. There are some things we can, I agree. Everything about the animal shelter needs to be expedited. I've had multiple meetings just in the past two weeks or so about it, and I'm continuing to have meetings to see what we can do. We do have some of the new kennels, I guess, being set up over at the jail, which was something we worked on. That's going to hopefully create a bit of capacity cushion for us over at Palmetto, which is unfortunate. We're in Palmetto, but at least it's going to help with the outside dogs and so forth. That's much sooner than the, the other timeline. That's, that's in process now. As for Dan Cohen, who spoke and ran, I have been to Sunshine Puppy, Coastal Puppy, 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 whatever you want to call that thing. I've been there more than once, actually. I was there yesterday morning, talking to the news and got asked to leave their parking lot. He, he did send me an email late yesterday. I'm going to meet with him and have a conversation with him about it, but regardless of what he does, I think everyone understands my position, that we shouldn't be selling puppies and cats at stores. Anyway, but I'm going to give him the, the time of day, and I'm going to go speak to him and have a conversation with him. Relative to the wetlands, I think everyone knows my stance on that because I voted against it to, to cut them. I think there's a new board coming in that has different views than what the current board had, so we'll see where that goes in terms of where that remains in the long term in terms of the, the wetland buffers. I will happily put them back to 50 feet, and I've done research. I believe we have the legal recourse to do so. As for the current lawsuit, I actually have a meeting right after this meeting with our attorney to see about at least postponing some of those hearings and things coming up so we stop spending money. I do not want us, I never wanted us, I think, you know, the, the state gave us the authority to create a, a very terrible lawfare system in the county to discourage any citizen from having a voice on anything that happens in this government. Just because the state gave us the right to manipulate the laws and go after people for exorbitant fees doesn't mean we have the obligation to do so. I am not going to create a lawfare state here in Manatee County and try to stifle people's voices. I personally have no intention of collecting that money from former Commissioner Joe McClash, and I think I will have the votes to not collect that money when the time comes, but I can't guarantee that. If I have the votes right now, I will just end that lawsuit this exact minute. But at the minimum, I think we should stop spending money and push this until there's new people on the board to have that discussion, because I think collecting $250,000 from somebody to hire seven attorneys for absolutely no reason is ridiculous.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Turner.
Well, I may as well start off on the same thing. We're always, with these lawsuits, we're always talking about how much money it costs us and how much time it costs us. So if there wasn't a lawsuit from Joe McClash, one that was weak, one that he couldn't win, then we wouldn't have, there was no basis for it. So he's lost the law, he's lost the lawsuit. Now, now, he wanted to settle earlier. Now we're, so what we're trying to do is recover taxpayer dollars for these frivolous lawsuits. So I am in direct opposition to what George Cruz is saying, because, you know, what we need to do is set a precedent for, we don't want to keep rolling over, spending our attorney's time, spending taxpayer money on all of these frivolous lawsuits. You come in, you lose, you're going to pay.
No.
Either way, he wanted to settle. Either way, either way, he wanted to settle. Either way, it's, who's taking up the time? Joe or us? We're just defending ourselves. The other thing, the young man that was talking about how many comments there are about the flooding from commissioners, when there's so many constituents threatening... flooding from commissioners, when there's so many constituents threatening to lawsuit, it does mute us, because we're going to get advised not to talk. So maybe if there's just a little less of this litigious society, it will free things up quite a bit. That's all I got to say.
All right. Thank you, sir. Mr. Bearden.
I'll go ahead and make a motion right now to reverse the $250,000 in attorney fees for Joe McClash.
Got a motion on the board?
Wait, you, you want to, you want to not collect $250,000 in taxpayer money?
I'll make the motion right now. I made the motion.
May I interject?
Wait, we got Madam Attorney.
I just want to, I just want to make it clear, the posture of the case right now, that the county attorney's office is pursuing attorney's fees, because that's what we do on behalf of the county in all suits. But no actual fee amount has been set. That has to be proved in court. If this board does not want us to pursue attorney's fees, they can give us that instruction, but you don't have to set an amount. You can just say that you don't want the county attorney's office to pursue fees. I just wanted to be clear, because there's no reversal. Nothing's actually exchanged hands at this point. Is that helpful?
That's fine.
Thank you.
So how do you want me to rephrase that, then?
Well, if it, if it's your intention to instruct the county attorney's office to not pursue attorney's fees in this case, then the motion should be just that, that you move the county, that you move to direct the county attorney not to pursue legal fees in this matter, in the McClash matter.
So that's what I do.
Okay, the motion to say, I mean, further discussion, you know, this, this will set a precedence out there that you can sue the county anytime you want, and we're going to back down from the taxpayer dollars that are spent defending the county in a lawsuit. I don't, if you say it's frivolous or whatever, I don't care, but we're going to, now, the county attorney's office is going to be given direction in, in this case, but I mean, it could be other cases too, not to pursue, not to pursue attorney's fees. When someone sues the county, I don't care if they withdraw the case or not, they knew that, that individual knew at that one point that the case was probably not going to be winnable, and decided to withdraw it, and then, but they could go to other cases. So I think, I think it should be left to the county attorney's office to negotiate with a litigant suing us, to negotiate, let them do their job. That's what they're, they're there for, is to do their job and come back with us with a settlement. And who says this can be 250,000? It's, they're going to work, the petition is going to work out its settlement, I would think. The judge is going to review this. The judge doesn't have to agree to our fees either. A judge can, a judge can say that our fees are too, are too high, and the judge can lower them also. So I just think that this sets a bad, bad precedence. I don't care if it's this one or another one or whatever, I just think it really does, I think it limits the county attorney to what they can do with regards to people suing the county for whatever, slip and fall, car wreck, whatever it is. Somebody crashes, one of our guys, public works guys crashing into another person, you know, it's, it's all the time. So every time we're going to have, every time somebody comes up and sues us, we got fees to collect, they're going to come in front of us, and we're going to stand here and have to either negotiate the fees for the attorney, tell the attorney not to get the fees, or not let the attorney do their job. So I will not vote in favor of this motion. I don't care who it is, McClash, citizen, whoever. I think the county attorney, the county, the county attorney should do their job. The judge will rule, when they, when they sit down with the judge, the judge will rule on what the amount of fees are feasible, and then negotiate from there. So I, I will not vote in favor of this motion. Commissioner Bauer.
So I was actually on the board to talk about recreation opportunities for our, for our disabled population.
Do you want to go back to that?
Yeah, I, I think, I think we can get back to that in a little bit.
I'll come back to you.
But, oh, well, I can, I can.
You're an attorney.
I, I have a little bit to say on this topic as well. So I'm, I'm of, of two minds on, on this issue. On, on one hand, I, I do think that having the situation set up where we can collect attorney's fees from, from regular citizens, it does set up a situation where it makes it kind of difficult for citizens to have a voice. On the other hand, it also sets up a situation, if, if we back down in every situation like this, it sets a precedent where the county can potentially be held hostage by, by frivolous lawsuits. So I, I, I am of two minds in this situation. I, I understand very much both perspectives. In this case, I, I don't think that I am ready to ask that the, the county attorney's office not to pursue the fees at this point, but I, I understand why, why Commissioner Cruz and Commissioner Bearden would like to not pursue those fees. I, I think at some point, they're probably going to go away, but I won't be voting for it today.
Commissioner Cruz.
Yeah, look, we have a, we have, we have a team of attorneys here, and we seem to be able to use our team of attorneys when other people sue us, when, when we were fighting the other side of this law, these wetland buffers, when seemingly we loved wetland buffers and we were fighting developers on wetland buffers, we used internal counsel for that, but now all of a sudden, an outside citizen sues us, and he's representing himself, and we have seven different attorneys. We haven't even gotten actual court yet. It didn't even start the case yet, and we somehow rang up a quarter of a million dollars of fees during some preliminary discussions about, about a case. This was done for the sole and absolute purpose of dissuading anybody from having any, any voice in this county whatsoever. This was a, this was a shot over the bow to say, do not come after us, because we are going to just weaponize outside third-party counsel to the fullest extent, because we can collect that money from you. This was to keep people from suing us, in, in good faith, not just in bad faith. I get it, there's going to be some bad faith. There's repercussions to everything, but this was a good-faith attempt at something that honestly, almost every single person in this entire town agreed with him on, and we just, we went, we, we overextended. This was ridiculous. I disagree with it. We should have used internal counsel. We've got it, until we got to a stage where we needed outside. I, I get that this is going to cause issues of other people suing us, but let's be honest, other than slip and falls and stuff, that's a different story. Anything development-related? 95% of the lawsuits against this county are from the developer suing us for Burt Harrison for saying no, not, not public coming after us for saying yes. This is a few and far between situation, and I, I think we, we kind of overextended it. I think we need to learn our lesson. I think we need to show people that we're not going to weaponize legal against our citizens if they have a legitimate grievance. And I, if we're not going to approve this right now, and I don't know if we have the votes to do it, I appreciate the motion, I 100% support it, then at a minimum, if this does fail, we need to make a subsequent motion, or I will make a subsequent, to at least defer any future expenditures that we have or the, or Mr. McClash has until after November 19th, and we can have another discussion about this, instead of continuing this path for no reason, because I'm telling you, I don't think we're going to eventually collect these fees while I keep spending money on it.
Thanks, sir. Commissioner Van Ostenbridge.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would just remind us all that we are stewards of tax dollars, and someone did file a frivolous lawsuit against us, cost the taxpayers $250,000. And as stewards of tax dollars, it is our responsibility to go back and collect those when we can, and this is an instance when we can, and so we should. I think it sends a terrible message if we do not. Michael Barfield is probably at his house celebrating if this ends up passing. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thanks, sir. Madam Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to clarify a few things about the procedural status of the case, so everyone understands how this works. There is a, there are depositions scheduled, and at least one deposition is already scheduled, and there is a hearing scheduled. At that hearing, it would be the role of the county attorney's office to put on evidence and testimony to support the time and the effort and the work of all the attorneys involved in this case, and it would be the responsibility of the other side to try to put contrary evidence to the fact that either that was too much time spent or too much energy spent, and then the judge would ultimately decide what is a reasonable and appropriate amount of attorney's fees based on the case and the facts. The county attorney's office has always taken the position that we aggressively defend the county in each and every case. We don't pick to go softball on certain cases and hardball on others. We aggressively defend the county in every situation that we can. But if this board makes a decision to either instruct us not to pursue attorney's fees in this case, or alternatively, the board could say, we recommend a settlement amount of X, and we can certainly bring that to the other side, if there's a figure in mind that you feel is appropriate. We can always do that. We'll respect whatever decision this board has, but until we hear otherwise, we will aggressively defend the county on all cases.
Thank you, ma'am. Back on the board. Commissioner Cruz, I respect your opinion, you know, where you're coming from. My point is that I don't want to handcuff the county attorney's office on whatever kind of lawsuit it is. If it's from developers on private property rights, or if it's on whatever the citizens want to come after the county for, citizens have the right to do that. I don't see us limiting their right or weaponizing the county attorney's office to shut down citizens' ability to come after the county for whatever reasons they feel. I necessarily don't have a, I like your second comment better than this, than this motion. So, but I don't want to limit the county attorney's office to be able to aggressively defend the county against a lawsuit, no matter what the lawsuit is. Private property rights, a citizen, on whatever. I just don't want to handcuff the county, the county attorney's office and their ability to do their job and, and go out and have the attorneys do their job, represent us very well, and then we come back to them and say, well, your time, energy, and effort wasn't worth anything, because we're just going to tell you not to collect your fees. I mean, if you, as, if, if someone sued you personally, you would, you would aggressively defend it, and you'd spend all the money you can, and if you could get fees back, you'd try, we'd probably try what we do. But I, I just don't want to limit the county attorney's office and their ability to do their job. Commissioner Cruz, you're back on the board. You back on the board? Okay. Commissioner Van, oh, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was just going to say that we don't have to make any decisions today. We can allow the county attorney and let the process run its course, and then ultimately, we can accept or decline a settlement at a later date. No decision has to be made today. Is that right, Madam Attorney?
Well, the, the hearing is scheduled for October 15th, and so the court could make that decision for us.
I understand, but we don't, we don't have to take his check, do we?
We don't.
There you go. So we don't have to make a decision today.
If the board doesn't want to, they don't have to.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Turner, you're back on the board.
Yeah, not to flog a dead horse here, but, you know, using the, the term weaponize a local government is, is a nice little tagline, considering what's going on federally, but this is not what's going on. I've only been sitting in the seat a year, but I haven't seen, I haven't seen our team of attorneys not being fair or settling cases, or, you know, this one might be a little bit more of an exception, because like our constituent state, there's a whole pile of people behind Joe McClash, so it's a little bit different. So, you know, I can see, I can see both sides of it too. In this particular case, we do have somebody that's constantly trying to sue us, and I just want to give the, our, our attorneys the chance to recoup taxpayer money in this particular case. Individuals coming at us, I've never seen us really going, you know, a small individual case. If we, if I look at the history, I'm just going, a lot of this is really, really, really overfair in most cases. In most cases, our, our attorneys are more than fair. So I mean, if we're, if we're looking at history and we're looking at how they operate, this is the exception on this one, but it needs to be taken.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, there's a, I clicked the wrong button. All right, there's a motion on the board by Commissioner Bearden, and it's been seconded by Commissioner Cruz, not to pursue any attorney's fees in the matter, I guess of McClash versus Manatee County. That's what you're referencing. If you all could cast your votes at this time. And the motion fails four to two. Thank you very much.
I want to make another motion, please. I want to make a motion in reversing the policy, go back to the 50-foot buffer.
It's not that simple.
But I'm going to make a motion.
I'll second that concept. It's not that simple.
Okay.
Where you're going with it. I would direct staff to put together something for our future land use meeting.
Why can't we do that right now? This is a public meeting. Let's do it. I'm making a motion. Do I have a second?
Yeah, you have my second.
Okay.
You need to clarify.
Yeah, County Attorney, can you opine, please?
Yeah. Respectfully, Commissioner, that, that isn't something that this board can do overnight. I think the appropriate way to handle it.
I understand that.
I think the appropriate way to handle it is to instruct staff.
But I, but I made a motion and I got a second, so we need a vote.
No.
Get a word of my motion.
My, my recommendation would be that you revise your motion to say that you are instructing staff to bring back the appropriate amendments to the code to modify the buffer.
So moved.
Got it.
Oh, I didn't. I hit that accent, sorry.
Okay.
Wasn't, wasn't trying to take your motion there, Commissioner Bearden.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
Public comment?
No, I, I.
I actually didn't do public comment.
I know I didn't do public comment last time. Huh?
Ms. Tesmer, you wanted to know exactly what the motion was?
The county attorney had it.
Can I get clarification on the buffer, what the size you want the buffer to be, or do you not have?
Go back to the original.
50. Revert to the original, okay. So my recommendation would be that the motion be to instruct county administration to bring back the appropriate amendments to the code to put the buffer back to what it used to be.
Correct.
Thank you, sir.
You got it, Vicki? Okay. She's updating the motion. I'm just waiting for the updated motion.
I really did.
Okay. We have a motion on the, okay.
How about we do public comment?
We have Denise.
I'm going to do public comment.
We have Denise Greer, who looks as though she would like to make a comment.
A comment from the other.
We should also go back and do public comment on the prior vote.
Okay.
Denise Greer for staff. We may want to call Kara down to further explain that, because what we changed in our code was to match the SWIFTMUD buffer requirements. So if you'd like, I could have Kara come down to give a little bit more information on that before you move forward with that language.
Did we change the code yet, or just?
We changed the comp plan. We haven't changed the land development code yet. So would you like me to have Kara come down?
I, I would, what I would like to do is, I think this matter personally needs to be workshopped with staff.
Right.
And get everybody involved in a room, have the citizens in there too doing a workshop, and not, you know, work this today from the dais. I think it needs to be workshopped. We did it before. This is a very sensitive matter throughout Manatee County, not only with the citizens, but with the development industry too, and the landowners too. So I think this should be, it'd be my recommendation to workshop this as soon as we can get a workshop put together, and get staff to be ready to present at that time the pros and cons of changing the buffers back to where they were, or staying where we're currently at in the comprehensive plan, because we have not moved it to the land development code yet.
So, Chair, but respectfully, we have a, we have a motion on the floor.
I understand that.
So I think we have to, I think we have to vote on that now.
I understand. We need to take citizen comment before we vote. Okay.
Do you want to change the motion to?
Hang on. All right. Let's, let me go ahead and open up for citizen comment. If anyone would like to come forward and give citizen comment regarding bringing the appropriate amendment to the LDC to put the.
It's not to the LDC, though. The LDC.
That's what, I'm just reading the motion.
I know, I'm just saying, I'm just saying, the LDC hasn't been changed.
I know.
Right.
Yeah, the LDC has not been changed yet. -bringing the appropriate amendment to the LDC to put the-
It's not to the LDC, though. The LDC-
That's what, I'm just reading the motion.
I know. I'm just saying, I'm just saying, the LDC hasn't been changed.
I know.
Right.
Yeah, the LDC has not been changed yet. I'm just reading the motion.
Oh, no. I was sorry. I was having to tell on the clerk.
Yeah, we need, we need to reword that motion. I mean, Mr. Bauer.
We're running a public comment. You have commissioners on the board that need to speak, sir.
Oh, I, okay. I mean-
I mean, how do people know what they're commenting on if the board hasn't had further discussion?
Mr. Bauer, could you step back? Commissioner Cruz.
I was going to say that the way this was changed, and I, I like the first motion, but the way this was changed, just to bring it back, we're going to have more than enough time to have discussion. I don't see why we need to workshop it at this point in time. We've, we've workshopped this thing ad nauseam. We had multiple presentations. We all know what we're voting on. Delaying this further with a workshop seems like an extra step in futility because you're going to workshop with, with one board now, and then, what, 90 days later, workshop with another board later if the votes don't go the way the votes go. It seems like we're just continuously kicking this down the road. We, if we put this on and have staff come back with, with the amended language and so forth, there's going to be more than enough time for all of us to be briefed on this, have any conversations we want with, with citizen communities, development communities, so forth, before this comes. It's going to have to be a full process like the last one was because it's a text change now because it went into the comprehensive plan. So, this is a long process. This isn't like we're voting on it next meeting. This is the kind of thing that has to go through all of the hearings and go through the, assuming planning commission again, maybe? Since it's a, it's a, it's a new, that's my point. So, this isn't even going to come in front of this board. Even best-case scenario, it's not coming in front of the people sitting up here now. So, why have a workshop with people that aren't going to be here to vote on it?
I'd agree with Commissioner Cruz.
I hear you. I hear you. I agree. I don't, I, I hear his point. County attorney. Well, Commissioner Van Austin Bridge.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The motion that's on the screen is certainly not the actual motion. Can I, can I hear the motion?
That's what I was getting to. Madam Attorney?
I'm sorry. I thought you were looking to the clerk. Forgive me.
Whomever.
If I may, can Assistant County Attorney Camilo Soto please address the most appropriate procedural way to proceed, because he might be able to give us the most appropriate language for the benefit of the board if Commissioner Bearden is, is willing to accept a modification or modify his-
That's essentially where I'm trying to go here.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm trying to help you get to.
This isn't, this isn't like it was before where we're, you know, awarding people entitlements. Now, it's the government is coming and taking property rights and taking entitlements away from, from property owners. So, it's a much different ball of wax.
Sir.
Good, good morning, Commissioners. Assistant County Attorney Camilo Soto. So, with respect to, I think, what the commission would like to do, it would have to involve, I, I think the intent, and this would be at purview of the commission, the intent would be then to explore or to direct staff to revert the comprehensive plan amendments to the way they were prior to their adoption, prior to the amendment. There has to be, I think at this point, that's probably the directive that I believe the commission might be going for. Once that directive is done, staff will explore and then implement the requisite notice requirements, and will bring that back before the Board of County Commissioners if that's what the commission would like. But at this point, action on that specific item can't be taken today. We haven't complied with the notice requirements required by Florida statutes.
Okay. And my next question is to the county attorney, as we're just finishing up discussing litigation. Does this expose the county to litigation?
I'm not prepared to answer that question off the cuff.
So, I mean, if we don't have, we don't even have an answer to that question, just to be clear. Board. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, sir. Madam County Attorney.
I was only on the board to ask Mr. Soto to speak.
Okay.
So, Camilo, would you be so kind as to provide the most appropriate motion based on the status of the comprehensive plan?
So, at, at this time, I would suggest simply directing staff to explore a, an amendment to the comprehensive plan, reverting the relevant comprehensive plan sections to the way they were prior to action taken.
All right.
And to, I think, assuage Mr. Ron's comments.
Stated the way it's stated, so I'm going to keep it the way it was. On the board.
Well-
No, no. We're going to go this way. This is, I have it exactly the way I want it. It's on the board.
Okay.
Commissioner Ballard.
Okay, so, I, the motion is not reality, so we can't-
Well, you have a vote on it.
Okay, but it's not in the-
Yeah, yeah.
Sir, I want-
Let her speak.
I'm, I'm the commissioner on the board at the moment. So, the motion is to bring back the appropriate amendment, amendment to the LDC to put the buffer, buffer the way it used to be. The LDC has not been changed. Only the comprehensive plan has been changed, so this is not an appropriate motion. So, I can't vote for this motion. I, oh, yes, Ms. Layton?
I'm so sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt, but I've been sitting in the back. I, I have a one-word suggestion for the motion. Sorry, Rachel Layton for staff. Instead of LDC, I would ask that it just read comprehensive plan in your motion.
And-
And not change anything else, just the LDC to comprehensive plan.
If that change is made, I will-
We have not changed anything in the LDC today, but the comprehensive plan was what was amended previously.
I would agree that that's an appropriate motion based on what Mr. Soto recommended. And I agree with Ms. Layton that modification would be appropriate.
Maybe we could take a recess.
If that change is made, I will vote for it.
Talk to staff.
What's, okay.
We haven't changed, we haven't changed the land development code yet, so we're not, we can't revert back to that because it's still the-
It doesn't exist yet.
The LDC is still the old version. The comprehensive plan is what we changed.
Yes.
So, if you just change that word to bring back the appropriate amendment to the comprehensive plan to put the buffer to the way it used to be, that's the exact same thing you want, and that's the, that's the motion needs to be made because the LDC is the way it used to be. We haven't changed it. We haven't voted on the language change, so it still looks like the old version. The comprehensive plan is the one that had the language change.
Yes, that's exactly correct.
The LDC hadn't been updated yet.
Mr. Chair, may I request that we just take a 10-minute recess so that Commissioner Bearden can get with the attorney and staff and come back with his motion exactly the way he wants it?
You're not on.
So, can you tell me the reason why, again, I can't word it this way?
The LDC's not changed.
Hold on, hold on. I'm talking to the attorney.
Let the county attorney, let the county attorney advise him.
My understanding, I wasn't aware of the status at the time, but the comprehensive plan is all that's been amended at this time. The land development code has not yet.
So, if the L, L, LDC has not been changed.
Not yet, sir.
Not yet.
Correct.
But what has been changed?
The comprehensive plan.
The comprehensive plan.
So, if you want a reversal of the buffer, you need to reverse the comprehensive plan.
Okay.
Eventually, that change will be rolled into the LDC.
Got it. Okay. So, I will do that. So moved.
So, you're, you're changing your motion to bring back the appropriate amendment to the comprehensive plan to put the buffer, the buffer back to the way it used to be?
Correct.
Okay. Second, are you okay with that?
Yes.
Okay, now, public comment.
All right.
Thank you.
Good work.
Matt Bauer, Manatee County. Sorry, not sorry about the hornets nest up here this morning. Commissioner Bearden, thank you for bringing this all to light. In terms of this particular motion, I think it's really easy in just terms of bringing it back to the same language as it was before. It changed. I think we got it straight now. We're reverting back to the previous comp plan numbers. Because we didn't have a public comment on the last motion, could I have a little bit of latitude, Mr. Chair?
Yes, I will open up for public comment and all that, too.
Thank you.
Sorry about that.
Couple points to order. Mr. Turner, he did not lose the lawsuit. He dismissed it because it became too much of a financial liability. As a single taxpayer going up against seven different attorneys, the potential to lose was far too great. That's the reason why he got rid of the lawsuit. Number two, Mr. McClash has not sued Manatee County time and time again, but whenever he has, he has won every single one of them, all normally on the basis of environmental protections to keep our community as, the best as we possibly can. Okay? Mr. Ron, I understand the precedent argument. The precedent argument, I agree, extends to a lot of things that you do on the board as it relates to, if we do this, then we have to do this for everybody. Okay? And that in accordance with ordinances and so forth, there are special approvals. It does not apply in law. If you give McClash the ability to dismiss, or you tell the attorneys, "Drop the attorney fee suit," that is not case law. Anybody else could, anybody at any point in time could come and ask you to drop your attorney fee suit or what have you. Doesn't mean you have to, or you should. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So, we're not making precedence by saying, "Mr. McClash, thank you for doing what you did for your citizens. We're doing what we should have done in the first place, was not even do any of this stuff. We're not going to make you pay what ultimately you're not going to pay." So, if you think about it from a fiscal Republican standpoint, why in the world are you going to go pay all the attorneys to go do something that is going to have a zero-end result? So, Mr. Austin Bridge could sit here and say that, "Oh, we're giving up $250,000?" You created potentially $250,000 by taking these pack of wolves onto a single person, one person, that didn't even go anywhere. So, my, my point is this. I understand some of these arguments, especially the creation of precedents. It just doesn't apply within the legal aspect because doing so is not, there's no case law here. Nobody can come and say, at a fee hearing later down the road, "Well, you let Mr. McClash off. Therefore, it's precedent." It doesn't work like that in the legal world. I say that because I was in the legal world for 25 years. I understand how attorney fee hearings work. That's not going to apply down the road. I think county attorney can opine about that. Pretty sure I'm, I'm accurate on that. So, those all things together, and for procession purposes, I have a meeting in 30 minutes, so if I leave before it's done, I apologize.
Thanks for coming, sir. All right. Is there another public comment regarding the motion that's on the board right now for the wetland buffers, to bring back appropriate amendments, directing staff to bring back the appropriate amendment to comprehensive plan to put the buffer back to the way it used to be? Seeing none, I'll close public comment.
We have one caller on Zoom, Mr. Chair.
Oh, all right, okay. I mean, all right, caller, just please state your name, county residence, and you have three minutes.
Charlene Gao, Manatee County. I am 100% in support of repealing and restoring the original comprehensive plan sections regarding the wetland buffers. I think that, especially in light of Hurricane Debbie, we've seen that less wetland would be an inappropriate idea to implement at this time. And I understand that it has us on board with the land development code, and it's, it should stay that way, but yes, I support reverting back to the original comprehensive plan agreement. Can I comment on the attorney fee thing, too, since these are two related items?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right. So, the whole situation with the wetlands that produced this lawsuit was in bad faith to begin with. And, and even assuming that it wasn't, okay, assuming, I do know that it was in good faith, then the, the action of creating the $250,000 bill was, it was completely unnecessary. So, when you talk about being good stewards of the, of the public dollars, that's not good use of our public dollars by using expensive outside counsel to do a lawsuit to defendants. You know, if you need, you know, I mean, you have how many attorneys on your staff, and you couldn't have handled it in-house for a minimal amount? Instead, now, you've got a quarter of a million dollars before you've even had a significant hearing. So, no, that's, that's on you. I mean, and considering that how much you're going to have to pay to Mr. Barfield because the county has behaved inappropriately with the, with the public records, you know, you take the L and maybe indicate, maybe if you don't, just instruct the county attorney to settle the amount for something that is agreeable between Mr. McClash and, and the office, because he, I understood he was prepared to pay up to a certain amount, but this is ridiculous. Just settle the thing and get it out of here for a reasonable amount so we can just be finished with it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Are there any other callers on the line?
We have a caller ending in 750.
All right. Caller, please state your name, county residence, and you have three minutes.
Yes, good morning, Commissioners. My name is Mark Vandery. I reside in Manatee County. I'm speaking on behalf of the Wardeline Road Preservation Group, and we also are in favor of reverting back to the original wetland buffers for a lot of reasons, especially in light of the extreme flooding we've seen this past month. We have made a correlation with the neighbors in the amount of surface water flooding that has occurred as the wetlands were being filled in over the years. And we're looking back maybe 20, 30 years as development progressed from west to east. And we are 100% in favor of going back to the original buffers that the Manatee County had. Now, you're talking about lawsuits, you know, and frivolous lawsuits. The way we see it is that this was a citizen initiative to appeal a land use decision. And we, the, the decision we felt is, was unfair to begin with. We felt that it was developer-backed, and as far as weaponizing the county against citizens' ability to appeal decisions, this would go a long way towards rectifying that, that action. I, if somebody had a lot of money and brought this all the way to the U.S. Supreme Court, if you want to talk about constitutional rights, how is a citizen not allowed to feel unencumbered to challenge a land use decision when it's right in their backyard, when developers have a history of dumping their dirty water on their neighbors after their development? How is a citizen not allowed to defend themselves? You know, it, it just, it just doesn't make any sense. And I, I don't think the Supreme Court would uphold this law, even though it's a state law, even though the county has enacted it. I, I think it should, it should reverse at least the wetland protections back to where they were originally. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. All right. Is there anyone else out there on the phones?
Not at this time, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you. Is anyone else like to come forward? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and close public comment. We have a, a motion moved by Commissioner Bearden, seconded by Commissioner Cruz. All of us in favor, or, sorry, could you cast your votes now? And the motion carries six to zero. With that, that is closed as part of the meeting. I'm going to give us-
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
We should open it up for public comment on the question of attorney's fees since we didn't officially do that. Yeah, I mean, I'm the issue of, um-
I did. I went back and said they could give comment on both. Mr. Bauer did.
Okay.
Ms. Yeoman did, and the lady before did.
I know they asked if they could, but can you open it up just to make-
Do you want to open it and close it?
Just to make sure that there isn't anyone else who wants to speak on the first vote.
Okay. Well, I'll just open up public comment for the motion that was made and was denied. Would you like to come forward and give comment on that? Mr. Bauer?
One more thing. I told you I got, apologize. I just want to make a point, so the board understands Joe McClash was not suing you for money. He was not going after money. He wasn't going to be collecting any money. And it wasn't a typical civil lawsuit. It was administrative. He was seeking to do what we're doing today. So, I want to make that sure. That's a point that, it's not like he's asking the county to pay him money. He wasn't trying to profit. In fact, he's spending his own time and his own money to do what you guys graciously did today. So, that's my last point to order. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. All right. Is there anyone else who would like to give public comment on that item? Seeing none, I'll close public comment. And what I'd like to do right now, I'm, we're going to take a recess until 11, 11:20. We are in recess. And we're moving on to the approval of the consent agenda. And...
We need citizen comments on consent, Mr. Chair.
We would need that.
Did we?
Yep.
We did not.
I thought I called for it earlier.
Not on consent, sir.
Have any items been pulled from consent?
Have any items been pulled from consent?
I was tardy. I would like to pull number six, please.
You're pulling number six?
Yes, sir.
All right.
I thought it would be pulled already.
No, I didn't.
Well, in my briefing, I explained I would want to debate.
Earlier, if anybody was pulling anything from consent.
No, no, I don't mean towards you. I was in my briefing. You weren't there.
All right. Is there any public comment regarding the consent agenda? Is there anyone on the line with regards to the consent agenda?
At this time, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you very much. Is there anyone in the audience? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and close public comment. I'll ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda minus item number six.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Van Ostenbridge and a second by Commissioner Ballard.
It was Ballard and Cruz.
Okay. You guys equal, no, you guys equal vote.
No, no.
Yeah, I'm just waiting for it to pop up. Okay.
I'm so sorry.
No worries.
You can do it verbally.
Yeah, I know, but it just makes it clear. Okay, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Van Ostenbridge, seconded by Commissioner Ballard. If you catch your votes now, we'll do it by voice vote. All those in favor? Oh, now it comes up. Okay.
I voted for it.
All right, the motion carries six to zero. Commissioner Van Ostenbridge, item number six, you pulled it.
I did, sir. I'm looking for more detail from the county attorney on item number six. I was under the impression we were going to be sort of right back to the same subject matter we were just on when it comes to attorney's fees and sort of being tough and standing up to frivolous suits and that sort of thing. And this is somebody who makes constant public records requests and suits and things that drain public resources. And this is an example of where I thought we were going to start not caving to all of these. And I'm just sort of looking for, and maybe this is one where we'd be the worst possible one to take a stand on. And if that's the case, then so be it. But I'm looking for more information.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Madam Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Commissioner. I would agree with you. This is one of the worst possible cases to take a stand on. Assistant County Attorney Mr. Dulles Polk is prepared to answer any pointed questions you have. But before he goes in to answer any questions you have, I would just let you know that the recommendation to approve this attorney fee settlement with the Florida Center for Government Accountability was not just a recommendation from the county attorney's office, but was also supported by the Public Records Division and the county's IT department. And then a second point that I would make, just for the board's education, is that about 11 months ago, after litigating a public records lawsuit for over two years, this same plaintiff recovered and settled a case with the Florida Department of Health for $152,250 in legal fees. So we certainly do recommend the settlement of $75,000.
Okay. Thank you. I'll make the motion to approve then, sir.
Okay.
That's the explanation I was looking for.
All right, there's a motion by Commissioner Van Ostenbridge, seconded by Commissioner Cruz on item number six. I'd like to open up for public comment. Seeing none in the audience, is there anyone on the line for public comment on item six?
No, Mr. Chair.
All right, I'll go ahead and close public comment. If we could cast our votes now. And item six carries five to one with Commissioner Bearden voting in opposition. All right, that ends consent agenda. Now, we're going to move on to the advertised public hearings presented upon request. Developmental Services, item number 38. Does anyone need a presentation on item number 38? All right, I'm looking for, all right, I'm going to open up item 38 to public comment. Is there any public comment on item 38? Is there anyone on the line for item 38?
No, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you very much. I'll go ahead and close public comment. There's been a motion to move by Commissioner Van Ostenbridge, seconded by Commissioner Ballard. If anyone catches their votes at this time.
Aren't you guys just there all night?
The motion carries, the motion carries six to zero.
Do you report, watch the shift?
All right, number, item 39. Would anybody like a, would anybody like a presentation on this? It's been moved to continue to September 26, 2024. You'll catch your votes at this time. And the item carries six to zero. All right, moving forward, moving into a regular part of the scheduled meeting. County Attorney, item 44. It's all you, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, I emailed each of you a copy of this complete agenda item just before 4:00 PM last night. As I'm sure you recall, the board unanimously directed the county attorney's office and county administration to examine the existing social media procedure and bring it or a new policy back before the board so that social media comments could be turned back on. I want to let the board know I apologize because I misspoke on several fronts at the last meeting during our discussion of this matter. I inartfully used the term "policy" and "procedure" interchangeably somewhat in our discussion. The document that I was referencing in our discussion was actually an administrative procedure that apparently was first enacted back in 2011 by county administration. This board has never actually had a social media policy. So since, well, on Friday, August 30, the county attorney's office met with county administration to discuss the existing social media procedure, how to proceed forward consistent with the board's direction. It was agreed that the appropriate thing to do was to put in, was to draft both a policy and an updated procedure consistent with that policy so that the board could So if the board wants to turn on public comments, it can, but I do want the board to understand that that is not without risk because you are creating a limited public forum. And once you create that forum, staff does have to moderate that limited public forum in accordance with the board's social media policy and the procedures that would be adopted by county administration. So we have before you a draft policy. In the event that the board finds that policy acceptable, we have a resolution ready that the board can adopt. But if the board wants to have further discussion on the policy and make any edits or changes, I think now is the time for us to hear your feedback so that we can address those and modify the policy accordingly. And I understand Mr. Bishop's team is already, they already have a very good draft of a procedure in place that is lined up if this policy were to be approved. My understanding, though, is staff does not have the appropriate services procured yet to ensure their ability to retain the public records that are necessary to comply with Florida law. So they are asking that this, that this policy, if you did want to approve it today, not actually go into effect until October 10th because that will give staff the time it needs. I see Ms. Pritchard nodding her head. That will give them the time they need in order to procure the services that can actually retain the records. Because once you allow comments, if the comment were violating the policy, we still need to retain that comment. We don't want to end up in a public records lawsuit where we haven't correctly maintained and kept records that we may have the ability to hide because they're inappropriate and they violate their policy. And we need the appropriate software to be able to facilitate us to do that. And I, at this time, I'd see if Ms. Pritchard or Mr. Polk, if either one of them want to address the board or if the board has comments or further direction based on the policy we brought forth today.
Doug or Lacy, who's the one?
Kind of.
I saw that in the list. Things you can use.
Yes, ma'am. Good morning, Lacy.
I'm just making sure I'm on here. We are looking at, we have already started the procurement process for SMARSH, which is the contract that we, we already have a contract with SMARSH that contains all of our text messagings for our cell phones. So we're just going to be piggybacking on that contract. But of course, things take time to procure, and that is what, I'll need some time to get that procured and onboarded.
What's the cost of that, bringing this new system onboard, just for...
So they, they charge us per social media account. I will say X is our most expensive for that. So we are looking at reducing some of our X accounts, but we are looking at about $6,000 a year additional.
All right, that's all right. Okay.
And I...
Commissioner Ballard.
I have a question about staffing and monitoring. What is the plan for who will be staffing and monitoring? And is there an associated cost for that as well?
Currently, we are, one of the things that did happen with the centralization of information outreach, we have content coordinators that are content specialists that are overseeing these. So that is part of their duties already. So the one thing is, we do have it where only information outreach has access to all of our social media accounts, and everything will be overseen by myself as the records custodian.
Okay. So we're not looking at any additional staffing costs, is that right?
Not at this time. Of course, everybody's doing as much as they can, but it will be one of those things where we will keep doing with what we currently have, and I will definitely come to see you guys in the future if needed additional resources. Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Van Ostenbridge.
What about after hours? I mean, if someone makes a comment at 7:00 PM on Friday, will it be there until Monday morning?
Right now, we currently have someone monitoring, except for the time they sleep. So that will be something that we'll have to adjust to. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
County Attorney?
No, the only thing I would add is, it would be very dangerous, obviously, to start this without the ability to retain for public records purposes whatever the comments are. And we need a service, as we've discussed, because some of the providers themselves will remove posts if they violate their requirements. And unfortunately, there's, there's law that requires us to have those comments, grab those comments before they're removed by the service. So it's, there are services that do this. Other counties are using this service. So the procedure itself, we've, we've tried to be very, very specific on what violates our posting policy so that there's not as much leeway by the content moderators. So we've made a long list, and we put, put it into policy for your review as well. But obviously, if there's anything beyond that that you all would like to see in the list or in the policy, that's what we're looking for from, from, direction from the board.
Okay, so, Lacy, you feel, you feel comfortable with an October 10th start date?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, I do.
Okay. All right. Any other questions of, on the board or anything? All right. Thank you. County Attorney, are you, that's pretty much it for you?
Does it require a motion?
I mean...
It would require a motion if the board wants to, wants to approve the resolution.
We make a new adjustment for the 10th.
Well, the, the resolution is drafted, has the date of October 10th in it. So if the board did want to make a motion, it would just be a motion to approve Resolution R-24-183.
Okay.
Thank you for the correction.
All right. So with regard to social policy, social media policy, there are a lot of public comments and discussion and direction regarding the social media policy. Resolution, adopt Resolution R-24-183. There's been movement, to move by Commissioner Ballard, seconded by Commissioner Cruz. If anyone casts their votes at this time. And the motion carries six to zero. Thank you, Madam Attorney, for all the hard work on that.
Thank you. The credit truly goes to Ms. Pritchard and Mr. Butterfield.
Thank you, staff. Thank you, Lacy. Thank you, staff, for all the hard work.
Thank you, Mr. Polk. Thank you, Ms. Pritchard.
All right. So are there other, moving forward, are there any commissioner agenda items? County Attorney, any other comments? County Administrator?
Yes, sir.
Any commissioner comments? We stand adjourned.